...a job for those of you who have those issues. At the same time, rather than simply getting a completely randomized input you call for the board to make sense of it, it will be helpful us to try to organize it as we have. Today's topic is going to be test administration of PAR technology issues, including issues and problems of delivering the tests online or lack of such things. Student adjustment online versus paper tests. How people who have been involved see advantages and disadvantages to moving to an online platform from the paper-based test. And frankly, how ready districts are across the state to move to online tests. Or frankly, otherwise we're already getting a lot of input on that, we'll look forward to more today. Our first hearing, we received a lot of input on the administration just on technology, although we heard on technology issues as well. We appreciated that input from experts, educators, administration, parents, and other concerned students. We have a format. I will call down the invited guests first. People will have five minutes for their prepared remarks. We encourage people to also submit testimony, what they're going to say, or additional material in writing. At the end of the time, you'll hear a buzzer, obviously, and think you're about 15-second warning in there. Yes, just like that. And then you need to wrap up within 15 seconds. Then the general public speaks, you'll each have three minutes. You'll have a similar evening warning with 15 seconds remaining. This is not meant to be a dialogue, it's meant to get input from you who'd like to express things. However, if board members make questions for you, we'll try not to interrupt you, but if we ask you questions when you're done, that comes on us, so you don't worry. I will be calling out people into groups. We can tell if we get three to sit down, go one, two, three, and then three more, and then three more. We lose less time to the shuffle around when we do it that way. One other note, I'd like to say before we start the testimony, I'd like to track one thing from our forum last month. At the meeting, I was asked by someone in the audience why Sandy Staski was not invited to give testimony. I understood it was contrary, and I stated that she had been invited. It certainly was my intention to invite her, frankly, I'm not sure if an invitation was sent and if I lost her, it could just go out as administrative oversight. In any case, she informed me the next day that she had not received an invitation, or she would appear that day, or she'd been unavailable. She would have submitted and written testimony, who were welcome either. In any case, at her choice, she's now scheduled to appear at our next forum in June in Bridgewater. She asked me to apologize, so on behalf of the department and the board, I'm sorry, I can state for the record, any perceived slight loss can be deferred. We'll order meeting her next time. All right, let's move on. The first testimony will come from superintendent called Dave and Assistant Superintendent Chris Malone from Revere Public Schools with John Mitchell, Assistant Principal of Revere High. And if they're acting through you, you'll take all the cheers. So let's do it, and you'll ask me to get in and get out, because a lot of people come for five minutes. And then, maybe I can do an on-deck circle, we'll be... Joseph McClary, will you respond? And, all right, two, we've got two more after that, but enough cheers. So Joseph and Lisa stand by. Can you use yourselves in your honor? It's long.
Well, I'm Dave, Assistant Superintendent of Schools in Revere, and thank you for the opportunity to give you a little insight about our position relative to PAR tests. I've handed out a report from our field trials last year, where we at Revere tested whole schools with PAR. We felt that was important to do from equity point of view. The sooner our urban children get a chance to take a 21st century test in a 21st century way using, utilizing technology, the better off we feel we are preparing them for the future. Urban children don't necessarily have assets in technology in their home, so looking five years ahead from now, 10 years ahead from now, as I often do, there is no rational reason to think that we won't be testing with more and more technology and their lives involve more and more technology as they grow through our schools. Our second graders 10 years from now will be entering college probably taking all their AP tests and College Board tests online. I'll be surprised if they're not. Our responsibility in Revere is to give students the chance to show their knowledge. We do not want, and we feel that we are fighting, the chance that technology, that a digital divide could exacerbate the achievement gap. We don't feel that that is happening in Revere after our trial that you have information on. We feel students are able to get their information into their computer and actually have responded very positively to the experience. I'll turn it over now because of five-minute time limit to Assistant Superintendent Chris Malone, who was much more close to the testing at the classroom level than I.
Thank you, Dr. Dave. I want to hand it to Chris Malone, this is the Superintendent of Schools. During our implementation of both last year and this year of PAR online, certainly this was a big undertaking for our district. We attempted to retrieve some feedback from both students taking the assessment and from the teaching staff. Students, for the most part, were confident and enjoyed the interest level of the assessment that was technology-based. We saw an improvement in that level of attention in exploring the assessment. Teaching staff was certainly apprehensive at first. Moving into a new online assessment, their confidence grew with each session. And it was great to watch the students and staff learn together how to properly navigate the assessment, how to work through some of the technology components. We saw an application of this assessment, really an awareness of both of students and staff of how to promote 21st century skills, how to show students with college and career readiness with the application of this type of assessment. We certainly foresee further implementation, if this is the direction of the board, where we would certainly want to ensure all of our staff and students are 100% confident in the ability to take the assessment, match it up with the current frameworks, make sure the instructional component of technology is seen every day in our schools, every day as it has been in the past 10 years. We've attempted to re-up our technology parameters for instruction. So we see this as a logical next step to have a technology-based assessment. I can turn it over to Mr. Mitchell, the Assistant Principal of the high school, who certainly has a little bit more involvement directly with students.
Okay, so I tried to add a few things I thought were benefits of the computer-based testing. Very different from the paper test, the computer-based test, there's no endless counting of test booklets, answer sheets, running around trying to find a piece of paper for an hour because you can't find it, it's stuck inside an envelope somewhere. Students are accustomed to this digital format. In fact, I think students, if you were to hold them, would prefer typing to handwriting because it's easier to revise their work. The video and audio features of the computer-based test were beneficial, I thought they were engaging. So the paper test is just two-dimensional, both the audio and video part of the test. I think the students really responded positively to that. The built-in accommodations and tools for the computer-based test, it comes with a same calculator, it comes with protractor, students can zoom in if they have visual issues. So all these accommodations that typically get assigned to students who are homeless accommodations, it's available to all students. We ultimately save paper and shipping costs. And the Pearson support was very quick. So whenever I called, we had some kind of issue, I spoke to a person within seconds. I didn't get the, you have five minutes remaining until your call to answer. It was like, so we were doing actual Pearson, so I thought that was really well done there.
So I just had a couple of questions, I had seen the report before and read it, and there was some discussion compared, probably to the difference of well, in Revere. There's some worry that it sort of matched up with the police force involved testing was going on, and sort of used all Chromebooks, etc., that were available. Is that a concern for you, or do you think over time, as we're appearing where SP usage, you'll get used to it and then move on and think you're going to go off with technical resources to handle testing and handle the rest of the learning?
As I alluded to before, in Revere, we've really tried to build a technology network for the benefit of our kids, so that they're exposed to technology and have, and don't fall further behind. Yes, currently, I think a little bit more scheduling has to go on, then will be the case in a few years. With any implementation like this, it's a bit chaotic in the beginning. And as time goes on, I think people will see that resources have to be put into teaching and learning, using technology to help guide students to higher achievement. And those uses of that technology, which is for teaching and learning, can also be used for the testing. So I do see right now a little bit of confusion, but as time goes on, I don't feel we'll be in trouble because it's also something that we need to do for our children. They need more access to technology. It is a role we're preparing them for, technological world, and it's really part of that equity issue, especially in our districts.
Great, thank you. Okay, yeah, Tom?
So just a question as far as what platform the high school has along the way, or are they iPads? What do they have, do they all put the computer on, what was it like having it in the elementary and middle schools? What platform do they have?
Sorry, I'll mention John's.
So the elementary and the middle schools, we had subpockets of one-on-one already established for structural purposes, but for the most part, we maximized computer labs. We did use some iPad carts and also some laptop, Chromebook-type carts. So it was a combination of those elements that we typically utilize in technology-based instruction all day long, and trying to really fan those out to the areas to match up with the assessment sessions.
Just the reason I ask is because I know in Revere, as some of the superintendents commend, we are, and we take great pride in the district boards, they're welcoming and well-equipped technology. And so I really think this is something that should be looked at and hopefully shaped down the road in most districts. However, right now, I think concerns the ones that do lack the infrastructure as far as having a test in their building, or computer assessment, or point of view. So I don't know if you're familiar with many other people in the building who are going to be giving testimony. If you are experiencing a lack of technology, definitely hear that. That would be seen out there on both sides, schools that are well-equipped that do very well versus maybe schools that aren't as well-equipped, and you're struggling to keep up with what we as a board maybe do our local district, maybe do to help those schools.
Thanks, woman. So, yeah, we do have the one-to-one iPad, but we worry about the technical supervision of those because it's just one of something that's more manageable, so PC-based is the way to go for us for the testing now. We allocated every desktop, whether it was a computer lab or an art room, has a computer graphic design. We also have laptop carts and some Chromebooks as well, so everything we have is true.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next we'll hear from Joseph McClary, and Lisa, beautiful. Last one, all right. I'll take it here, Lisa.
Hi, this is the guest, Vanessa.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to give a test bite today. I'm Lisa Gaspun, I'm actually the Director of Citizens for Public Schools and Consultant for Fair Test. And I'd like to join many other educators, parents, and students who are advocating against moving to PAR. I also urge you to take this opportunity to recognize that whether PAR or MCAST, we need to have less testing and no high stakes if we are to achieve the goal of educating all of our children to be successful, engaged, and productive adults. First and foremost, PAR tests do not measure what we value and what our students need to be successful in college and career. Instead, they remain a narrow, mostly multiple-choice measure of just two academic subjects. Whenever I speak to groups of parents, students, and teachers, I always start by asking the same question. What is school for? And I ask, when you send your children to school each day, what are you hoping that they'll get out of school? And people will often say things like, they hope they'll learn how to get along with different kinds of people, develop a life on love and learning, learn how to collaborate and resolve conflicts. They hope they'll be exposed to science, art, music, and literature, and learn how to think critically about issues facing our communities and the world. No one has ever said in answer to that question, they send their children to school to prepare to take multiple-choice tests in math and reading. But it's really no exaggeration to say that for many children, that's what school is becoming or has to become. The fact that PAR tests are split into two parts means even more time taken from well-rounded instruction. With PAR, the second section is so close to the end of the year, there's no more time after testing for engaging in projects or field trips as many teachers have done after MCAST. This year, teachers report that many students with disabilities and English language learners lost the services they need and that the law requires because teachers were pulled to proctor tests. For all students, PAR tests increase time devoted to assessment and rob time for learning. Since I was invited to present expert testimony, I want to share what I've heard from the real experts, those with experience administering PAR tests. Here's what teachers I've spoken with have told me. A sixth-grade math teacher said that when she designs an assessment, she designed it so it's clear where the student has stumbled, so she can use the results to help her students improve. PAR does not do that. For example, a sixth-grade math question asks students to add, subtract, multiply, divide, and interpret the remainder. If they get this kind of question wrong, she has no idea where they went astray and how to help them. Another teacher spoke about PAR's impact on her own children. She said they were only getting science for one month and social studies for one month this year. As Fall River Education Association President Rebecca Kusicka said, quote, "Passing a test is not the end game, all effort goes into improving scores." This happens at the expense of those things not as easily measured, such as creativity and independent thinking. Waymouth teacher David, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Gerald, decided he could no longer tolerate the impact of our test improvement system on his ability to do his job. In his resignation letter, he wrote, "I can either devote my time to teaching, or I can help the district produce its precious data, but I can't do both." Students need to be taught, not analyzed. They are human beings, not an experiment, not parts of a machine coming off of an assembly line. My students need and deserve my full attention, something I cannot give under determined circumstances. A critical problem with PAR is that by outsourcing our testing to Pearson, we lose important state and local control. As the problems are identified, they can't be easily fixed. Let's take back that control and share it with the experts, our educators. I hope that you reject and move to PAR and revisit the question of what kinds of assessments would drive better teaching and learning in the Commonwealth. I hope we can look at systems that have been successfully using performance assessments, such as the New York Performance Standards Consortium, which now includes 48 public high schools in New York. Schools have shown dramatically better outcomes than traditional schools using standardized exams, including better high school graduation and college persistent rates, lower dropout rates, less suspension, and lower teacher turnover. The results have been particularly strong in these schools for students with disabilities and English language learners. And finally, I'd want to challenge the members of the board to take the eighth-grade PAR test. CPS has co-sponsored a series of Take the PAR events where teachers, parents, and school board members took sample tests and then spent an hour discussing them. These discussions surfaced many concerns and issues with the test. I think each board member should take the eighth-grade exam, publicly report the results, and have a discussion based on their experience before voting. Thank you so much.
So let me ask the representatives from the Remi Center to come down next. I think there were two. And also, I'm going to butcher names all day, I apologize to let anyone else pronounce your guys. Halima Rahim, has walked from New Mission Line. While you're coming down, I'd like to acknowledge Pam Nettor, the President of Fall River Public High School, who I told this to.
Oh, hello.
Thank you for hosting us, we really appreciate it. Thank you for allowing me to space. Good afternoon, thank you to the board. My name is Chad Donkman, the Executive Director of the Remi Center, education researcher Paul See. With me, Jen Kulis, our Research Director. Given a limited time, I will be providing the testimony, but since there may be some question, I've asked Jen to join us. She is the lead researcher on the case study testing test, Assistant Superintendent Dave in handout. Our intention with this testimony is to try to use some information on key findings from this research. The research is based on more than 170 interviews and focus groups with leaders, teachers, and students in Revere Public Schools and Burlington Public Schools, and a pre-test and post-test survey of 400 staff members in both districts. I want to be clear, my intention is not to provide you with my own personal opinion. My intention is to, to the best that we can, represent the attitudes and perspectives that we reported in researching PAR field testing in both of these districts. Two important caveats, the research that you have in front of you that again, to your presentation, hand it out. One was conducted in the spring of 2014, so the data is from last year. Two, as noted, Burlington and Revere are leaders in implementation of technology in Massachusetts, and that should be taken into account. Let me divide our findings into two big categories. One is what was the perception of folks in the district of the PAR field testing? At the district leadership level, and you've just heard much about this, the implementation of PAR was seen as a necessary step in putting their districts on a pathway to develop schooling systems that were equipped for the 21st century. To be blunt, I don't know that either superintendent would have started with assessment when it came to the integration of technology into their district, but they actually saw the integration of technology to make better assessments available, absolutely crucial to where they saw their school systems going. At the teacher level, the main focus of teachers was not on any of the political arguments that you've heard around testing and assessment. What the teachers were mostly focused on was how to integrate technology into their classrooms. They had anxiety about the potential for new roles in the testing extration, but they saw assessments within the district as a core function of what takes place in a school. Finally, students' perceptions of that. Generally speaking, the elementary school students liked taking a test on a computer. They found it more engaging, they were equipped to use computers in daily life, and they preferred it to writing what they paid for and testing. The high school students had many of the same perceptions, but they did have a heightened level of anxiety because they saw the test as a shift from what they were used to, and they attached future prospects to their performance on the assessment. So given those attitudes and reflections, what were our key takeaways from where districts are in preparing to implement PAR? And that's the second focus of our findings. What I do want to be clear about is that implementing PAR is hard work. It's a major shift in what we're asking schools to do, and that comes with challenges. Four challenges that we identified were, one, the need to identify the inventory and location of PAR-ready devices. What device will you use? A phone book, an iPad, a desktop computer? Where are they located? Will that location obstruct other things that are going on in the school during the testing process? Two, the administration of the test requires new roles. IT staff, when available, often take on a bigger role in assessments than the district said had been done in the future. Tasks that were often staffed by folks in grade one and instruction, excuse me. And as noted, teachers themselves in proctor tests took on new roles. Three, that investments that were to be made to support PAR testing principally within the districts were still focused on instruction, not the test. What I mean by that is that we did in our findings discover that the desktop PCs were at this moment best equipped to administer PAR testing. The district, however, chose to invest in handheld devices because they thought that they had more adaptability to other things that the school system might want put forward. And finally, school-level management overall raises new questions. Who is making decisions? Who is staffing activities? How are you providing training to use new technologies that staff might not be familiar with? However, recognizing these four challenges, the main takeaway we had from both of these districts is they saw the implementation of PAR entirely doable. A challenge, hard work, but something that they had full confidence in the fact that they could accomplish. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
So my name is Colleen Rangin, and I'm from New Mission High School. I am, I guess, in the second phase of testing. And I concur that our school has done all those things, and we find that it's not seamless, but it's doable. So the point of teaching to the test is not happening, the point of instruction is being solidified. So my takeaway from a lot of this is that, one, I teach A P language composition. I've been in New Mission for six years. I've taught 12 and 10th grades, so I'm familiar with the MCAST testing. And oftentimes, I find students walking in class with this false sense of confidence that they've done well on MCAST. What they do on MCAST is not applicable to what happens in college. So the critical thinking aspect is what I'm most interested in as far as PAR is concerned. So I work with students in A P, I work with students in the inclusion class, and what I'm teaching is critical thinking and problem solving. So if we're struggling with the test, I'm looking at the test and saying, okay, what is it in the test that you are or are not understanding? So right now, because we're in the testing phase, I do have the option of looking at the paper portion of it, and then I can work with students who need to be accommodated and say, this is what we need to focus on. So I have widows, young children, one has D A D H D as well, and some other disorders, or whatever you want to call them politically. But the point is that he can do work. So when I see him, when I challenge him, he'll say to me, am I doing this right to himself? He's not having a conversation with me. And then he'll say, I think that this makes sense, and that's what I want him to do. So whether he is working on a computer, or that he's working on paper, the point is that he's doing the task that's necessary. When I look at MCAST, I'm looking at things that are performative events. So we're looking at 10th grade MCAST, and we're looking at merchant events, gray tents. The questions power, though, are too simplified to assess critical thinking. So one I like best is, you know, there's a difference between the three tests that they're using. So that's the first question, what's the difference between the three tests? One's gold, one's silver, one's leather. So it's footnotes, so students don't have to think through that yet. When I look at the PAR assessment, because I was one of the teachers who tested the test, and I was amazed, I was like, wow, this is a shift in thinking, and this does require that we do more. But is that not what we want, that's going to the 21st century? I think the answer is yes. And so I thought, and we fear, folks, because it is an issue of equity. What are we saying? And we say that we don't want PAR. We don't want to do the work as teachers because we're not the focus. The children are the focus, and I think that we need to keep that in sight.
Thank you. President, sorry, thank you, sweetie. Appreciate it, thank you for coming. Rebecca Frederds from Ringtree, Heather Roman from Rockton, and Bernie from Gormals from Tampa. All right, still have three, so I don't know.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Frederds. In addition to being a PAR fellow, I focus on image signage arts. I'm the Director of English Readings and English Learning Education for grades K-12 through rem�e schools. My experience with PAR began in spring 2013 when our district volunteers took part in the first round of high school field and private testing. We tested about 60 10th graders online in a one-day session. Seeing students' interactions with this early version of the test was eye-opening. Some students navigated pages with ease while they're still attempting to sneakily hit the on-screen button or an unexpected job update. This early version asked students unsuccessfully to keep part's A and B of a question on two different screens, and the text to the left appeared pagedated rather than as a long scrollable field. Both of those things have since been corrected in the platform. The students, a mix of college grad and honors classes, approached the task with interest in the challenge and a sincere feeling of responsibility to the state and to future students. In spring 2014, many of the schools of grade three were selected to field test either the paper enhancement or the computer-based test. Preparing for the computer-based administrations was consuming. Our reach for our shorthanded tech staff and our modest stockpile of student machines, another administrator, myself, and our two... another administrator, myself, and our two out of the four people in our entire district's tech department were on hand for every single computer-based administration, troubleshooting issues along the way. But safe for a few 3rd graders who ultimately couldn't view the videos, the students that the teachers survived the event, our administrative technology team learned a great deal, not just about PARC's technology platform and requirements, but also about our district's resources and limitations. Ringtree elected to join PARC operational testing in grades three through eight in 2015, and we chose the option because we believe PARC represents likely future advances in testing. We chose the option even though we had significant concerns from our past PARC experiences, so much so that our superintendent and school committee chair had sent a statement letter outlining PARC's shortcomings. But PARC wasn't the only part of this situation with shortcomings. We had hoped to have our ability to participate in computer-based testing this year, but we were thwarted by our own spotty wireless network. I tell you this so you know I speak firsthand, using technology to administer PARC has not constantly for us. But these bumps, hiccups, and occasional flat-out failures don't lessen the worth of the goals of PARC, both in content and in technology. Technology aside, in preparing for the content of these tests, students get to wrestle with interesting challenging texts and questions, comparing texts, collaborating with classmates, and communicating to explain their own thinking. Preparation leading up to the actual testing practically demands that students talk through and defend their thoughts with their peers. The complexity of the task here was a step above the challenge that test. Preparing explicitly for the test's technology demands, students are working with high engagement in environments more akin to the ones they'll be part of in higher education in their careers. While the actual testing technology continues to develop, the word is striving to provide technology access and challenging content tasks to all students remains. Echoing the earlier remarks from Revere, the Rennie Center, and New Mission, even in a suburban district, the PARC exam becomes leverage for us to build resources in both of these areas. The last three years have shown me that our students and our district need the challenge and the opportunity that comes with PARC. While our path to progress has not always been easy, it's been valuable to our students' skills and their perseverance as 21st century learners. Thank you.
Good evening. Met me here.
Better look, pardon.
My name is Heather Roman. I am the coordinator of elementary math and science for the Rockton Public Schools, and I'm also a PARC fellow, an original PARC fellow, so I have been in this long while for the last three years. My role in the district is multifaceted, I guess. Because I have been a PARC fellow, I have been part of a leading team that has been trying to build out the PARC over the past two years with the field test and the field operational test this year. But prior to that, and one of the reasons why I feel compelled to speak to the board is because of my role in the district in preparing teachers for our new standards and what they call new, but we don't, they don't, so many of us anymore. In many of these meetings, often we hear the standards and the PARC assessment speak in synonymous link. And I just want to be very, very clear that I have a lot of experience with the PARC test, both from as a PARC fellow, but also as one of the members of the project, both as out in our district. But my passion is most certainly with the Massachusetts 2011 frameworks. And what I can say about the PARC assessment is that I feel that the quality of the questions that we have been privy to in the tutorials and in the practice test, I feel, especially from the math side of the house, they are true to examining what students not just can do, but understand conceptually about mathematics. I think that is a huge step for us, is asking students to reason mathematically and incorporate the mathematical practices in a way that is so important that we are working so hard as teachers to incorporate into their classroom. And I feel that the quality of the questions that we have been privy to do do that in mathematics. I really feel strongly about that, and because I'm so passionate about the standards, it is nice to see that the questions really, really strongly align to that. That's not to say that we haven't had our struggles. I have to say that I don't believe that the platform was ready for a reply at the time. We've had a lot of problems. We've had five schools that are going through the computer-based test, and we've muscled through, but it has taken everybody, all hands on deck. There's people at every single school working very, very hard. I was in school all day today, and three major issues coming up in classrooms all day today. So we have definitely had our struggles there, and we have the fantastic IT departments, and so we've dealt with portion of that. It has taken a lot of resources to get five schools onboard, and that seems like it's going to be a continued struggle. But that's not to say that we don't believe in making sure that our students have that same equal chance to enhance their digital literacy as other students in other districts that don't have the same struggles that we have. I also say that as far as the PBA and the end of year, that was a real struggle for schools. The window was lengthened because of all the snow and all of that, but it really came hard on us currently, in particular the adults, to be honest. It was less on the students because they have short windows of time, and they were not testing every day, but it took a lot of manpower for the adults, the teachers. It really was a struggle, and the test was so long, it just, not a day to cover. So that was a real struggle with us as well. The last thing, the three to five, the platform is difficult for the grades three and five students in particular. The reading strategies that we teach to our students as far as close reading and being able to have highlighter and pen and really work with the text was difficult, not to mention that the text box are small, and students fill in that little tiny text box, and they think they're done, but not really recognizing what they know from experience, and then, you don't, you don't. So that was tough. The version editor is very tough. And with mathematics, you know, with PLA, where we're trying to teach our students that we intake this information digitally, and then we're trying to on-demand compose, right? With mathematics, with thinking, you're writing your job, and you're doing all of your work, and then you're transferring that work, and it doesn't lend itself to the same type of real-life on-the-swap composing that you need to get later. So that's been a real struggle for our three to five students.
Mr. Chairman, could you, as refreshing for us, maybe, tell us a little bit about being a PARC fellow and the strategy that you want to contribute to that, too?
Sure. So, three years ago, I wanted to learn more about the PARC assessment, knowing that it was coming. I applied to become a PARC fellow, and was accepted. And the past three years, I've had multiple chances to go and work with colleagues from all over the state, as well as with, I always call it PARC National, people from other states. And really, the first few years was really talking about the Common Core state standards, and what that means and what an assessment might look like to really assess the complexity and the conceptual understanding that these standards really require students. So we spent a lot of years doing that, learning more about it, learning what the items were going to be looking like, what were they going to try to be assessing, how they were going to try and assess math practices, those types of nuances that were new in districts. And then, as we come back, we meet as a state level, we talk about how can we inform teachers in communities and school boards, and we have done presentations all over the state to every type of audience, to families, school committee members, superintendents, teachers, to try and let them know the work that's being done across the state.
And who did you apply to good administrative PARC fellows?
I applied to the department at D N C, and Barbara. Marilyn is one of them. I forget, it was Barbara and Susan were.
Susan Well.
Susan Well, and, yeah, so they were the first ones. We've had a lot of change in people in the last couple of years, so, yeah, so it's been great because I have been able to work with so many people across the state, so.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything?
I'll just add that every state has its own group like the Massachusetts PARC Fellows. So PARC in some ways has that concept of state having groups of educator leaders who can meet with each other within the state, but then also go to meet at national level and library. And I had a really fabulous experience in the winter, meeting with educators from all of the other PARC states and the other, the national PTO and parent groups that are involved with PARC, talking about materials that we have to communicate with parents about PARC, and what the web presence looks like, and what parents want to know, what parents want to know in an evening meeting, and what they want to see when they go off the website, and working with the organization Grade Schools about producing videos that show parents exactly what second grade Common Core reading really looks like, and what it really looks like to be writing at a second grade level. So this is my first year as a PARC fellow. I spent wonderful collaborating with people across the state, and really giving me a perspective to bring back to my district for professional development purposes. So we appreciated the opportunity.
Great, thank you both. And may I ask two more questions?
Yeah.
And then I just want a question, maybe, kind of, about structured PARC fellows, that you should really use as a guideline, or we could be hurled into that, if I was to ask.
Heather, I just have a couple of follow-up questions to you. I was scribbling rapidly, and missed a few things.
Talking fast, you're gorgeous.
So, one of the things you said, you mentioned at some point, that there were, today, during the administration, there were like a few day issues. I wonder if you could just lay it for us?
Sure. So one issue was, we were getting a weird, I don't know, I can fix, or three zero five six.
Oh, okay, say it.
And the only way we could get out of it was, we had to literally come out of the test and then come back in, and then it would go. We actually created a, because of the Java issues that we've had, we got through that for the PBA.
Can we read the Java issue?
Java issues? So Java, we are on Microsoft Acer tablets, I don't know if it matters, but you have to run Java in order to be able to run the platform, and Java updates often, really often. So if you do not have the correct version of Java, you know, I'm not the active person that's supposed to tell me, then the program won't run. Sometimes you can get past it, you can say run this time, or you want to install later to run this time, and sometimes you just may get past it. So that was one of the issues that happened. Now, we could surpass that, even if I pass that, I should say, for the PBA, because we actually, my IT director put out a special login for the kids, a PARC login, so that nothing could have, it was a very secure, you go in, everything else shuts down. And that way, we didn't have anything running in the background and all the things that during the field test would kick kids out of the test often. I will say, during the field test, we had a lot of students being kicked out. That has not really been the case for us during the operational test. Many of the issues today, which might have been different from last week's, but was the Java issue, again, because they did that Java update between the PBA and E O I, the error, three zero five six, and then we had this really bizarre volume problem, where the volume was silent machines. But then when we went to click, click here to test audio, of seven students in this one particular classroom and a few other classrooms, they couldn't hear the volume. And so the only way we could get out of it is we had to click all the way out, sign in as a different student, come back in, sign in, everything was.
And it was through a headphone?
That was through the headphones, yes. But I unplugged the headphones, and it's still been here, so it was, but the volume was up. And so it was almost like the machine had to be restarted and, yeah, so those were. All in all, considering that we were testing, I would say about 125 students, and I'm third students today, we were about 15 minutes behind schedule. So although super inconvenient, and at the time, really frustrating, we started 15 minutes later than we intended.
You said something about, I guess, the part of writing, just writing something else, or writing a previous sound, it sounded like there was an operation that students can perform, just sort of like cutting and pasting into the fields rather than just working directly with the.
So for mathematics?
Yeah.
So, you know, when you're reading something, a piece of literature or informational text, and you're reading, and you're responding, and you're composing, everything's kind of right there. In math, when you are presented with a multi-step mathematical problem, especially when it's in a word problem, a context, you know, the students are reading it, trying to process it, and then they're using their scrap paper, and they're working it all up, and coming up with their answer, and then they have to transfer that back into a platform that they're not really familiar with, the equation editor. And I'm going to attest to this, but had lots of conversations about how the equation editor really is not intuitive, but had a lot of problems with the students, you know, we tried to give the tutorial and all of that, but it was very difficult, especially for our students.
Great, yeah. And then the last one, concerns or comments, especially for 35th graders around the way in which they gave the text, and the normal classroom environment, they'd be reading a book, they'd be either highlighting it, maybe writing notes, I'm not sure what, you know, your approach is, but it is just a different experience when they're doing it on. And I guess my question is, how big of an issue is that in terms of their ability to not just navigate the test, but to sort of show their best work? And then also, if you were to sort of assess the upside of the online version of a new electronic test for those grade levels, are there benefits that really outweigh the ease with which they might be able to interact with a paper and pencil test that may be desirable, or would you sort of lean towards, you know, actually, maybe, for those grade levels and that subject, it may be better to use paper and pencil?
I think it's difficult, the way we teach, we have students, and to get the text, we have them highlighting, we have them close reading, and that's very difficult to do, you know, with stickies and the highlighter, and that's difficult. But what I will say, one of the benefits, that's what we do, that's what all of you did, probably most of the people in this room did today, is compose. It's really helping students learn how to read something, and compose and respond. So there are benefits to that. I think that it's, in an ideal world, I would love to see a piece of paper, let the kids do all this, and then compose their answers, but that's not necessarily the platform that they're looking to go through. So I think that there are definite benefits to having that on-demand composing, but I know that it's a real struggle for our PARC teachers to, how do we then teach those same reading strategies on a digital platform? And with mathematics, it's really, it's that transferring, I mean, as far as the benefits of taking a math test online, I think, a lot of the benefits, other than pushing digital literacy into school. We purchased those Acer tablets not to take tests, and that's definitely a catalyst, and it's helping us get there, but that's, we do not say, what's going to be the easiest way for kids to take a test, because otherwise, we'd have to build on a school, have desktops and bus kids in, so it's probably the easiest way. We're trying to enhance the digital literacy of our students, so we want teachers engaging with these devices, and having their students engage with these devices on a daily instructional level. So that's a benefit. As far as the math test, it helps the adults, I would say. Thank you.
So your question, Mr. Chairman, was to just put PARC fellows into context, and I want to thank Heather and Rebecca for the work they've done as part of the PARC fellow work. We tried, in all, in our project, to involve teachers at pretty much every stage of the development, from laying out what it is the test should be assessing, to actually reviewing test items and making decisions about which test items hit the mark, and which ones weren't, which ones were appropriate, which ones weren't. So we've had lots of teacher involvement from the beginning of the development, and administrators from Massachusetts as well as the other states. The PARC fellows are an effort to create a core of educators, a philosophy of PARC fellows and Commonwealth, who get to know our new curriculum frameworks. I say new, they're five years old, the 2000 and 2001 frameworks, and the PARC assessment, and can be a resource, not only to their own school district, but to go and do workshops, and speak to parents, can help teacher groups, and so forth. So that's, in a nutshell, where they stand.
Commissioner, please, I'd like to go. All right, if you made it, Joseph McQuarrie from Lowell, from King Kongos from Boston. May I ask, invite Angela Singer from Melrose, and Courtney Miller from Milton. All right, keep going. There's also a Park Fellow from Bonver Hill Community College, Sunny, sorry, Sunny?
Sunny.
Sunny, come on down. Thank you. All right, no idea who's in there. So introduce yourself and please start.
Thank you. My name is Courtney Miller. I am the ninth year's college math department chair for Milton High School, one of the Milton Public Schools, and I'm also a first year Park Fellow, so before inviting us this evening. I wish that I was down here with my previous panel just because I feel like the Milton Public Schools in general definitely reiterate a lot of what Rockton and the Great Public Schools have conquered in terms of teachers supporting the Common Core standards as well as parents in that community and the school districts choosing to administer the Park Assessment this year. So in Milton in particular, we did decide to administer grade three, three computer based Park Testing at the high school level. We had chosen to administer grade nine math Park Assessment online. We are an integrated math district, so we were administering the integrated mathematics online exam, again, computer-based, and at grade eleven, we chose the ELA exam. So all six of our schools did have experience this year with the operational assessments going computer-based. And I won't reserve my comments to talk about the technology in particular, knowing that our district is, is fully behind with the Park Assessment in terms of its push towards implementing those Common Core standards and making sure that our students are becoming better problem-solving thinkers. So thinking, speaking to the technology in particular, overwhelmingly, we saw that our students were very comfortable with the technology. Even though we are not, we were not at the forefront of implementing technology in our district, like we're here in Burlington Public Schools, we were fortunate enough to start implementing Pro Books in pockets of our six different schools. In particular, we currently have a few hundred at the high school level, a few hundred Pro Books at the middle school level, and then different parts in each of our four elementary schools. But again, that came later than me. So we started receiving those Pro Books into our schools towards the end of last school year and then had a big push to get them into the hands of students working through some of those sample test items at the beginning of the school year. So very quickly, we realized that although we didn't have as much time as we had hoped to have our students working on a technology platform and getting used to using technology in an educational sense, our students overwhelmingly felt comfortable knowing into this assessment, knowing that they were going to be taking it online. That being said, speaking to the math portion and reiterating what Heather just said, the platform itself was a challenge for us. We felt like the students got frustrated when they had to use the equation editor and something froze. In multiple instances, we had students who were feverishly typing, had gotten used to using the equation editor and felt like they could get better, there were days to have on the computer. It would freeze, we would, they would be kicked out of the test and then have to go back in and actually retype in all the work. So a few students definitely experienced some levels of anxiety just because the platform wasn't working as well as we hoped it would. Also, speaking to the platform, we felt that it wasn't as user-friendly.
Hold on, hold on. Coach, just come on down as far as you can. I said before that before you sit back, I think we get to step next, so please come on down next.
The platform wasn't as user-friendly as we were hoping, just in terms of the legwork for the test coordinators, figuring out how to ensure that all of the students were in the correct test items, making sure that those sessions were started and stopped, moving students from starting at one unit, two were starting, perhaps a unit two or three, depending on whether a student was absent on the first day of testing, et cetera. Again, just was not as user-friendly as we were hoping. And because of that, we felt like we really didn't have the opportunity to train our test administrators to do as much troubleshooting as I believe Pearson had hoped that they would. And so rather than test administrators being able to troubleshoot some of those issues while students were actually testing, we instead had three or four test coordinators going from school to school to make sure that there was quote-unquote expert or somebody else who could go into any single classroom that experienced an issue to try to alleviate that issue on the spot. So I think the platform in general, if it became more user-friendly, teachers would be able to help with some of that work. Teachers were anxious about administering the assessment online because they wanted to make sure that they weren't the cause of any anxiety for students, but after administering the first unit, a lot of teachers felt very comfortable and felt backed by the district so that we didn't see that that was an overwhelming issue. And my last comment is about the technology staff in general. I think that although the amount of time that students are being asked to take these PBA and EOI multiple unit assessments could be, if not equal, a little less than the time that they were actually spent in terms of hours. And as assessment, our technology staff has definitely been tied up in Park Testing for, it feels like about two months now. And so even though our district was fortunate enough to hire an educational technology specialist to go in and help, uh, help teachers implement technology in their classroom, she has been sprung up just working on part-related issues for the past two months. So taking that tech staff away from educational technology has been a challenge in our district. Hi, Angela Singer, I'm the eighth grade director, sixth through cloud in all the public schools, and I'm a first year Park Fellow. Our experience in others is quite different because we decided to go in and participate this year in grades three through eight with KPT and past in grade 10. We had participated in our testing last year, which we did online in grade seven. Our testing experience was very positive with the computer-based test last year, but we simply felt that we did not have the resources, the network from what's necessary for our students to work on the test this year. That being said, the material of the test and the standards that we test students in the state on are really on par. I think that our test in particular has initiated a lot of conversations about education. The changes to the SAT test really in many ways mirror the changes in Park. So I can't speak to this year's computer administration, but the paper and pencil test in others won't give any difficulty at all. And as a Park Fellow, we've had tremendous opportunities to travel around the state, speak to different teachers and administrators in many, many districts, and feel very strongly that this is where the state needs to go.
I'm not supposed to write so fast and want to catch the end and want to come. You said the Park test standards are on par, but I can get what's on par with the law.
On par with standardized testing that students experience in other areas, including the PSAT and the SAT. And I think now that we have these spontaneous changes to the PSAT and the SAT test, we are here on par. Moving ahead for.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Anna Kang and I'm a higher ed Park Fellow. I am actually a professor at Bonver Hill Community College right here. I teach mathematics, I teach algebra, calculus, algebra, statistics, and all the way down to developmental math, arithmetic, foundation of algebra. Currently, I am in developmental math fourth year, where I ordinate 50 instructors, 147 sections of developmental math. And just to give the higher ed perspective, since the Park is a measure of college readiness, that's important, but higher ed has voice in what that, that means and the implications. I've participated along with, I don't actually know the numbers, but large and broad faculty across the nation, we did the judgment study. Just speaking to what that is, higher faculty across the nation had the opportunity to look at the current test, the actual test. We did all the questions on the PBA, all the questions on the end of the year, and we were to assess whether we thought a student, a low C student in one of our college credit bearing courses, how they would, with how they would score on every subject. So, and then I particularly looked at the Algebra II, since that is the measure, that test is used in mathematics for college readiness. Just to give some, some conclusions from that, from my own perspective, I found that Algebra II questions were extremely challenging. Somebody previously mentioned that was speaking to the fact that the question for multiple choice, however, I felt that the multiple choice aspect of it didn't take away from the challenging nature of the questions. I, along with many of my colleagues, believed that the questions are extremely rigorous. They required students to process and synthesize multi-layers of knowledge. Not only did they have to display high proficiency and skill, but they had to demonstrate reason and problem-solving. And also, one thing that apparently engraved is that some of the questions were based on standards from statistics. Most faculty that, because I was also part of the panel discussion afterwards, was some faculty in the state to discuss our perspectives on the test. And most felt that if a student scored a four or five, we're very confident that the student would be more than prepared for a college credit bearing math class. I would personally say a score of three would indicate that students were ready. So, you know, it's a very challenging question, sorry, test, on our, for our student who might be going into it as an 11th grader, seeing it for the first time, it might be sort of like thrown to the, to the pool. However, if you have a student who walks through the Park since third grade, which I believe is the design of the assessment, all the way up to 11th grade, I think that that student may be adequately prepared to succeed in this test. This, from the higher ed perspective, this has also allowed us to engage in very many conversations with K-12 partners. At Bonver Hill, we had conversations with Malden High School that we've allowed to, that has allowed us to really dive deeply into the Common Core and its standards. This also, I think, has really opened up some great conversations for placement for high school students at the community college. These conversations, I think, are great because, you know, we, from the higher ed perspective, we are being able to provide input for what college readiness looks like.
And thank you all, and I'd like to thank especially the, all of the Park Fellows who've come from, gone above and beyond your regular jobs to dig in and kind of help figure out the trends that we're seeing of Park and the questions that we need to answer. I think there are a lot we should be going forward. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, yeah. This is Jeffrey Moya, Mr. Hall. We can talk about how students specifically had an issue of typing a response for the English section and then being kicked out of the system and having to log back on and being played in, affecting her response. My question is, was the time that they spent on that response given back to them? I'm concerned about, I think you're very about pointing that students can lose time if it's not given back to them.
So in particular, I was actually speaking to, just to the math section, just because I am the math department chair, but I think your question would go with either math or ELA. And the instructions in the Park manual are very specific saying that if the technology issue arises like that, that that individual student would be given additional testing time to make up for. So if the student was not tested for, say, seven minutes, then they would have seven additional minutes added. So the timing piece, I don't think was an issue. I think it was more the students feeling anxiety about the fact that they had to go back in and retype their response and if they didn't, all those students were given scrap paper, if the student hadn't transcribed their entire response on the scrap paper at first, it was almost like they were starting over again. So I think it was more just the anxiety and the frustration, but in terms of testing time, that has not been an issue in the Park.
Okay, so.
My question here is developmental math coordinated community act place. I assume probably way too familiar. So you see, you have some information with this Algebra II test and the potential as a predictor for credit bearing courses. Can you see promise for this, the whole strategy that all schools have around this definition of college readiness? And when you did that, is it an alternative to the present system of the act place?
I think it's fairly certain to say that, that the current system is not a good system. That it's speaking to the act place. So there's lots of conversations around placement and Park, I think, is, is a very hopeful, you know, scores of students that I think will be very useful in terms of placing. I think the conversation had to really be around the students that scored twos and threes. What can you do to, you know, perhaps put them in any college credit bearing course will give some support? And those are the conversations.
They also have their senior year high school, correct?
Yes.
And the great potential is those students scoring two and three, get their message to the junior, and they have some work to do, that work will get done in their senior year and put them in a much better position for, for higher ed folks going forward, right?
Exactly.
And so thanks for that. One other, it was interesting to me, you mentioned you have an integrated math program. Is that up to 10th grade or does it go all the way through the?
Goes all the way through 11th grade. So we have integrated math one, two, and three, and then students still have the option to retake.
Now, do you, do you feel well positioned with that curriculum, given what you're seeing in terms of these assessments? And you, you see that aligning with the math framework, math framework, right?
Absolutely.
And do you see that, you see that as an advantage at all, the students that have been integrated sequence might have with this park test?
I'm not sure if I would say that it's an advantage or disadvantage, thinking about the math frameworks in general. There is a separate section for the integrated math courses. So just like if I was an Algebra II teacher, I'd be looking at the Algebra II standards. I'm an integrated math one teacher, so I look at those. And in terms of the Park Assessment itself, there are separate, separate exams that are given to students to make sure that our integrated students aren't taking a traditional Algebra and geometry, et cetera.
But do you like what you see as an integrated math teacher in terms of the alignment with that integrated test?
Yes. I think that the standards in particular, the standards that we are teaching based on the math, math, master's programs are aligned with what we saw on the Park Assessment. The only challenge, I think, because fewer school districts have chosen the integrated route, we weren't given as, you know, in terms of the practice exams, we were told which specific questions to go to in order of practice with our students. So for example, in the, in the grade nine integrated math one course, the teacher would have to pull up the Algebra I exam, pull up the Algebra II exam, pull up the geometry exam, and say to students, you're going to practice questions three, five, and seven on this one, et cetera. So I don't think that there are as many materials out there for integrated math teachers. Again, just because it's not a route that many districts have chosen.
Actually, thanks to, I want to thank you all.
Sorry.
Oh, all right.
First question is about the ACT placeur and your comment that ACT placeur is not so good than the, the Algebra II test is. Could you give us a little more color as to why that is so, some examples of what's important there?
Well, first of all, ACT placeur tends to be very skilled. So the, the questions are very one-dimensional, they're very, you know, basically add these two fractions together. Doesn't really give very many contextualized problems. The Park test has a lot of, as I mentioned, for math questions that require more, you're not just, you do more skill and then you're measured on that skill. But there's contextualized problems as well as ones that require a grade on critical thinking.
So your, your point would then be that students who do well on ACT placeur or not is terribly well-prepared for a credit bearing course, as opposed to if, has too many false negatives?
Positive.
Negative.
as opposed to if it has too many false negatives? You know, where it's, where too many false negatives. I suppose those students are straight out of a credit bearing course because they didn't fully align with ACT place. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, one more time?
So, what you're saying, if I'm interpreting it correctly, is that ACT place is too skill-based, doesn't sort of have enough lack of metacognitive thinking components to it. And therefore, students who pass ACT place may not actually be ready for credit bearing courses. So, it produces false positives as opposed to the opposite, which I think has actually been the conversation that's been going on around higher education, which is it produces too many false negatives for students who don't do well on ACT place but actually could be well-served in a credit bearing course?
I think that is one perspective. I think mainly my point was ACT place doesn't, it really goes back to the standards. So, ACT place is clearly not standards-based. It's measuring, bearing on what you might currently want your students to go. And I think on the higher ed perspective, that's not really doing the job at this point. And so, Park would only serve to increase the standard for which we want our students to go.
Would that result in near-term, as you talked about, students being prepared to be rated three and then by the time they get to 11th grade, then it might be less of an issue? But if that's used for the placement decision, my assumption would be that you would believe that more students would not qualify for a credit bearing course than using the Park exam than you do today in ACT place? This is the top of the test.
Yeah.
And if I could follow up with Angela quickly. You said last year you missed the seventh grade online or the issue you gave. Any sort of compare and contrast as to where strength weaknesses are?
Well, interestingly enough, and also related to some comments that I did earlier tonight, my seventh grade student enjoyed doing their computer test more than I did during my pencil test across the board. They thought that the experience with the paper and pencil was not as standard as the computer-based. No, we did not see the scores when they had the testing last year, so I can't really tell about the experience. But I think on the whole, our students are not prepared for the computer-based testing that we tend to come around.
So, for example, students did walk out of this year's administration and say, who may have taken that version last year and say, "Wow, that was, you know, that was so much better than that last version. That was so much easier," or whatever. Like it actually was the reverse of this.
Right. And you know the frustrations students felt last year with glitches that went on with the computer? They seem to have disappeared from memory entirely. So, I think with the ready resources in the future, I think we allow students to have those experiences.
Okay, two more. Thank you very much. Two more invited speakers, then we'll break. So, two representatives from NDA, each is named personally.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time and your attention. I appreciate it. I'm David Bankuso, President of Bankuso Strategies and a board member of the Massachusetts Business Alliance for Education. I've spent my career in the technology industry and have observed firsthand the rapidly changing demands of students who will be expected to meet the workforce. First and foremost, technological competence is among these. That competence includes the ability to effectively use technology to light communication, use it for problem solving, and understand how it works and fully develop it as a tool for their work. Today, students are exposed to technology to a variety of degrees long before they arrive in a classroom. Students are already interacting with digital tools in their social media and online activities at home and bringing these skills to their studies. If properly encouraged, this engagement provides motivation for learning and an opportunity for teaching how to make the most of the tools as study aids, communication tools, and knowledge resources. Critical thinking is just one example. Understanding how to assess the validity of outside source material and evaluate the veracity of information accessible on the internet are now such skills for life. Online assessments can reveal valuable information to educators about the application of these skills and as well as about students' academic knowledge. To me, quite frankly, technology can be a great equalizer. And fully embracing the use of technology in its many forms in the classroom can be one of the single most important things we do to erase the social inequity within our education system regardless of its cost. Consider the use for a moment of online testing to evaluate English language learners. Technology has the capability to enable ELL students to better express their subject matter knowledge distinctly from their language skills. It simultaneously allows them to improve their language skills while expressing that knowledge. Clearly important, technology has the capability of enabling teachers to utilize data that shows the differential on those two skills and adjust teaching accordingly. I will raise one caution about the move to online testing. If Park is what's driving our schools to bring the technology up to the level that it should be regardless, that's a valuable level. But Park should not be driving the decisions and purchases made around technology in its whole. Integrated technology in our schools must be based on what's right for teaching and learning in all situations. Assessments are critical, but we're just one part of the greater whole and goal of education.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Joe Sazito. I'm retired CFO of Solid Sports Corporation in the area in a design software company in Massachusetts. And I both bring a viewpoint of employers among in particular in technology businesses. And I presume to go beyond that dimension or address this question. I currently also sit on the boards and advise several early-stage technology companies. So, in addition to that, I'm a member of NDA, Mass Business Alliance for Education. And I also serve on the NEAK Business Policy Task Force that provides input and feedback to the National Assessment Government Board in setting policy for Nate and for increasing the reach of Nate results to the business community. So, with that perspective and that perspective only, I have two comments. One around Nate, as it always does, setting the standard, if you will, and then a big point about an employer in the technology industry. Clearly, the future of assessments is online. And that future is not far off. The person that comments earlier, Nate is setting the base. All of its assessments, some of you may know, are to be online by 2017. They're not that far off. One of the reasons the National Assessment Government Board, MAC, made this decision is because Nate's digital-based assessments will enable students to demonstrate important skills in problem-solving and thinking, which are not as easily measured by paper and manual assessments. I gave you three examples of that earlier. Nate clearly has done the work blazing a path for the future of assessment technology. And I think there are many parallel goals that have been set for Park assessments to follow in this path and keep the pace. Second point from the standpoint of the employer. Certainly, Nate is only one example of the increasing demand for our students to be fully capable of reducing the technology required. That's now, not just in the future. For employers, familiarity with online feedback tools is not just desirable in candidates, it's expected. Survey tools, delivery of customer self-service, expansion of markets in customer reach via social media tools, and conversion of many business systems into customer-facing services to cloud-based applications. All are assumed in business to be understood by their employees. For many of our students, this is not Jordan. They don't know what we're talking about. The sooner students are exposed to interactive technologies built with meaningful feedback mechanisms like assessment tools, the sooner they will be ready for all these current commonplace workplace applications. One can argue that in using technology for assessments as well as so many other areas of applying technology to delivery of learning in the classroom, our state's educators and administrators are much too far behind. There are reasons for being behind, but no excuses. I don't think that's the case in Massachusetts. Massachusetts, though, must be willing to address those reasons and to push this advancement in testing industry forward via, as we're faced now, what we have in front of us, not as far as I said. I believe this gives our students and teachers a way out on getting the most out of these inevitable online assessments. Their feedback lags, and their benchmark, just two examples of advantages. But perhaps most important, in the next couple of years, the opportunity that this laid up to improve the assessment through earlier implementation. I hope it gives them a better chance to make sure that that continuous improvement takes place beyond just being able to do it first. And we have a fine record of that.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you to all of the invited guests who made testimony in the first part of the program. We'll take a 10-minute break. So, I'm going to be back just before 6:40 and a heat strike extra. We can start with Alexander Lake Math, Ryan Diaco, and Hannah Contries in the front row seats here. We'll be back with you as well as rapid, and we'll have testimony in 10 minutes. Thank you.